I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Basil here, Mrs. Bates.
Here.
Mr. Doughty.
Here.
Mr. Kurtz.
Here.
Mr. Rathke.
Here.
Mr. Snead.
Here.
Mr. Rioski.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Martino.
Here.
The prestigious Republican participation are the same as they've always been. If you have anything to read or copy, you need to present it to the board. You need to come to the podium, sign in, state your name and address. You have three minutes and comments on agenda items we've made after each agenda item tonight. Under announcements, there was an executive session held on September 2nd, 10th and 12th regarding personnel. And there'll be an executive session after this meeting regarding negotiations of personnel. Are there any agenda edits? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the announcements? Moving on, Mr. Hurley.
Okay, the start of the school year's been very good in most places, except for the vandalism of the high school, which I think you're all aware of. The only other minor problem we've run into has been the bridge being out and the transportation delays as a result of the bridge between Monocacy and Burzbro. Other than that, things are going very well. The kids are back, classes are running, schedules are running, and things are going good in our schools. The one thing I did want to bring to the board's attention, it just came from PDE, PDE will not be reducing SPP scores, which is the met primary metric that we use to evaluate schools. The primary reason why they will not be doing that for all the schools that took the PSSA is because of the change to the Common Core. The high schools still will receive that metric because the keystones are already aligned to the core itself. So they're tested, it will be a valid measure for the high school. But when you see our middle school and elementary schools, the SPP will not exist. That doesn't mean we won't have student data. We still have value-added data that will come to the school, and we also have the individual student results, which we already have, and we've used that for class placement and all the things. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Any questions from the board?
I'd just like to extend my thanks to the nutrition again. Beginning of the year's always rough go, and I know the graffiti over there by school, and our A.D. being out a few days made a little challenge over there. So thanks to everybody that had things open and smooth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Martino and Mr. Hurley. I know that there was a breakfast at the opening of school for our staff, for our teachers, and Representative Gillen was gracious speaking that I really didn't say something just on the record about how that event's been successful. I think the board members, great that this breakfast was put together. I wanted to thank you for doing that.
I was going to say something during the legislative report. I want to thank the nutrition group for providing the food, and I understand that the comments and feedback was very positive. And I invited Representative Gillen, so I'll let Mr. Hurley say what he felt about Representative Gillen's presentation.
He's a very gifted speaker, very inspirational, did a wonderful job speaking to our staff. So it was a real good job overall. And again, the food that the company put out for us for free was also very nice. So I think it was appreciated by the staff, both the keynote speaker and the food that they got.
Can we send a thank you note to the legislature?
Sorry, I didn't hear it.
Thank you.
Any public comment on the superintendent's report?
May I make a comment? May I make a comment, please? I just wanted to thank the high school staff. I got a very nice report from a gesture that the athletes of the football team made towards the music, the band. And after the game, I guess, they nodded to them? Or could you elaborate on that? Because I thought some good community bonding, I think.
Yes. So I know with Mr. Parks and Mr. Herman, we're both really committed and bond and growing spirit in the school community. And we discussed a practice of having the football team win, this part of the losses, come over afterward, application hands of the opponent, and salute the band, and raise their helmet stones. So, you know, I've seen this before, it's happened in other places I've been. And usually that lasts about one stanza. Mr. Herman put together about three stanzas of Uptown Fun. You know that, Mr. Martino?
I heard it.
Come on.
I heard it.
I would tell you, the first part, the other kids are going in, and it was pretty good. The second stanza, the team and the man were, the whole place looked really, you could feel it, the excitement. Then the students came over. I knew the vibe had changed when the parents were videotaping on their phones as a member. So it's something we hope to continue. I did say to Mr. Herman that if, you know, if we are not successful, then maybe we don't want to play Uptown Fun. Maybe there's something more appropriate. It was really deep.
Thank you so much. I'd love to hear good reports like that. Appreciate it.
Any public comment on the superintendent's report? Seeing none, we'll move on to curriculum and instruction. Mr. Kurtz?
Thank you, Mr. Martino. I am excited to give this curriculum instruction committee report because it's the first committee report where I'm utilizing this new tracker that I sent out to all board members to keep track of where each item stands. Our committee meeting was just before the last voting meeting, and we discussed elementary staffing, and that was resolved by Board action. We brought back full-size education positions. Textbook review process, we're continuing to investigate that. And the administration has this task of delivering a few pieces of material to the committee at the next committee meeting so we can continue to keep track of that. Employee recognition, we're looking for investigating whether we can implement a teacher slash employee of the quarter program, a teacher/employee of the year program. The administration is developing that proposal. We need our presentation on after kindergarten, and we are looking to continue the investigation, we're still working on that. And the hope is that we can bring to a board, the goal is to bring to the full board their number down vote before March for inclusion in the 2016-2017 budget. We discussed elementary report cards, and Mrs. Kiesel was in the process of putting together a packet, proposed a report card structure to be approved by the board. Civics, DVHS, which we're planning a presentation on, the student government changes. And I think the committee would be excited to hear how this could have had its involvement in that building. Curriculum recovery, DVHS is our final topic of the evening. We discussed the costs, both in terms of monetary costs and also costs in terms of time and potential that are being impacted by the status quo. So now we're looking to put together a better system to allow more students to gradually learn time and learn their material so they don't have to come back for a fifth year or even were scrapped out. At our next committee meeting, we're going to be talking about a way to hear Mr. United States High School address. Mr. Rathke is going to be a presentation on some alternatives for complementary media items, I guess, for civics at the next one. And I'd like to have some description about achievements among non-native English speakers, just a discussion. And I'd also like to start talking about the kindergarten registration process, the sets come up in recent years, just in terms of deadlines and how that works. In addition to the items that are still ongoing, the next review process is supposed to be a breakthrough for us in the next few months. And there's more information in the punch list that I sent out to the board. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. Any public comment on curriculum and instruction? Seeing none, we'll move on to building and grounds. Mr. Basil?
The facilities committee did not meet last week, so that we're going to have an executive session. And we'll be going over some items that are necessary at the finance committee meeting on the 16th. Sorry, we'll have some one at the point at that date.
Sorry.
Who cares, anyway?
Thank you.
All I have to say is that we're not spending, I don't have any money request for you to see. Say up the next one.
Can I turn the mic back on now that you're going to talk? For anybody that did not hear that, the next facilities committee meeting is joint with the finance committee this Wednesday, and then there's a facility committee meeting on October 5th. Questions from the board? Seeing none. Any public comment on building and grounds? Moving on to finance. Are there any board comments or questions about course approvals or the per capita tax exemptions? Seeing none. Mr. Basil?
So as the board already knows, we had met with Jim Thompson and Thompson Associates, who is an architect who specializes in capacity, building and capacity analysis, which is something that we were looking at as related to enrollments. We met with him for the holiday weekend. Mr. Thompson has about 30 years of experience, spent over 100 projects, about 10 million square feet of school condition assessment, 65 educational assessments, seven Plan Con projects, and district-wide planning for over 15 school districts in his career. So a very accomplished individual who understands what this process is and how it works. We reviewed with him the current building layouts of the district, our enrollments, the reserve study that we had done, and the potential scope of work as it related to the functional capacity analysis the board was looking for. He shared with us some examples of his work product. I have one here. It's been on file with the district now for a couple of weeks. This is for the Eastern Area School District. So board members are welcome to check this out if you want to see what the actual file result of his work would be. But essentially, what he can do for us is the following. He's going to provide, he can provide a functional capacity analysis with an educational assessment study. And this is basically a study of our schools and their student capacity as it's currently on the plan, as it's currently used. So snapshot of what we have and how we're currently using it. And then what he would do is he bring forward options to us in terms of alternative uses for the current facilities we have in order to deliver the educational offering, our curriculum, that the district deems best suited to fit its students' needs and population while considering our enrollments, whether increasing or decreasing. And this may include a discussion of grade configuration, i.e. K through four, or five through eight, or nine through 12, or eight through 12 models. It takes into consideration special education, transportation, attendance lines, a whole gamut of considerations that need to be discussed and analyzed. In conjunction with that, he'd also do a facility condition assessment. So I know we had a reserve study done. That's kind of an overall look at things. What he would do is take a look at our exam that, he would take a look at our facilities report, walk our facilities as well to understand what our capital needs are for each building. And he would actually put together upcoming cost scores, instead of like going to a cost means book and saying, well, standard air-conditioned unit's going to cost X number of dollars. We anticipate this unit to have a lifespan of five years, so five years from now you need X number of these air-conditioned units that can cost you this much money. He'd actually go in and say, look, this specific unit is, you know, has maybe two years left, and it's going to cost you this much money to fix this particular unit. So he had a little bit more of a granular look at what our capital expenses are going to be going forward. And he would work hand in glove with Casey to make sure that we have that information available to us. And then in terms of understanding our upcoming costs, be able to tie that into discussion as what those impact, those costs would be on consolidation opportunities within school district. So it's a very comprehensive look at, I think, I guess the best way to describe it is take a look at all the different resources the school district has, take a look at how we are using them, and then making suggestions on maybe how we should be using them, given these constraints that we're faced with, whether they're capital needs, or it's declining enrollments, or it's HR, whatever it may be. And then make some recommendations to the school district as to what the path may be going forward while not sacrificing the curriculum offerings that we have to our students. And he emphasized that very strenuously at the end. At the end of the day, whatever suggestions he's making, were not to compromise the educational offering in the school district. And I'll let Mr. Hurley or Mr. Small comment as well, since they were both at the meeting.
It was a very good presentation, very thorough. Obviously, he's a very experienced person. And it seems to me he's going to be provide a balance between the economics and also the academics there. He's looking at the whole picture, not just an individual piece.
Mr. Small, do you have anything you want to add?
No, nothing more.
So he's going to come, I'm sorry, you going to say something, Mr. Small?
I think the, should we call it the advantage of his presentation is, quite frankly, his experience with Plan Con, the organization that he was formerly with, because he's been on the ground level, or how buildings were to be utilized originally. Like, not to say that there may be other entities that do something similar, but he obviously, because that presentation that he had in there and demonstrates, he had really dug into some of the statistics in some very close by, and provided this analysis.
I did forward to the board his proposal, a number of, about two weeks ago, I think it was, and a timeline for how he saw that unfolding. He said he's happy to come back. He would have been here tonight. We had a conflict in terms of the schedule. So he's going to come on Wednesday night to the finance committee meeting where we can go and propose. I would strongly encourage board members to attend if you can. And if you can't, maybe provide us a list of questions that you may have that we can ask him. Please take a look at this report that he developed so you have an understanding as to what work product would look like. And I guess after the meeting, listen to the tape and see what he had to say firsthand so that we can take some action on this. I think in terms of the timeline, he would need to get moving, you know, this ball on moving forward with an analysis because it's going to take him some time to do what he needs to do. He did say that if we were considering enrollment study along with this, he would work with the PA Economy League in terms of, you know, incorporating their work into his analysis, or he would use the enrollment studies that we've done to date and incorporate those into his overall presentation. I thought it was interesting. He did show a graph, sort of what we were looking at in the district last spring, and we currently have on the website, about minimums and maximums in terms of capacities, and different assumptions that you could use. And I thought it really spoke to the issues that were raised by the board when we were having this discussion about capacity in our buildings and utilizing our resources to the best of our abilities to accommodate our pupil enrollment. So I encourage you all to come on Wednesday. If you have any questions, let me know.
I just have, I have one question, in terms of a definition, mostly for the public. His experience in Plan Con is valuable because, maybe you could tell us briefly, Plan Con is, it's the PDE requirements about how a school construction is handled, right?
Correct.
It's a specialized area of expertise that just a common contractor wouldn't have, right?
Correct. I mean, he's familiar with all the requirements that the Pennsylvania Department of Education has in terms of bringing buildings online, and the studies that are required to justify the expense as well as the reimbursements that come from the state. He's a certified architect. He worked with Hayes Large, I think, for about eight years. I believe I provided his bio as part of what I sent to the board, and included that, as like I said before, is about over 100 similar studies to what he's proposing here for other school districts across the state.
I need to do more research eventually before voting on this proposal. Like, after the facilities, the facilities reserve study, I don't think we got our value out of that. And I'm not as inclined to support the consulting stuff moving forward without understanding the true value behind it. So that's something that I'm going to be moving to ascertain over the next few weeks, is the value or the cost, because I don't think the facilities reserve study was. So any insight you might provide of that, where I'll listen to recordings. Again, I'm just a little on edge on spending more money on these things after that, my
Any other board comments or questions?
So, just one quick question was, so I thought question was the gentleman's expertise and experience and his state knowledge in the area, but I didn't know whether we were considering the money, the money we were asking about that did, or is it just other folks who are trying to provide the same services?
I don't have, I mean, if you have other people that have experience to the degree that this individual does, I'm happy to try to obtain other bids. I'm not aware of other folks that do exactly what he does. I mean...
Oh, yeah, the one mention that we don't raise, maybe that was...
Yeah, but that just came up like two days ago. So, on a Saturday.
That's why I was kind of off my mind, yeah.
On a Saturday. And we can certainly reach out to them, but the number that he provided, I think, in his proposal, which was about $15,000 or $16,000, is less than what the Redding School District was proposing for their...
I mean, looking at that, maybe I just understood, I thought that was also encompassing what the Economy League was doing as well. They were going to do the both pieces of that. I could wrong, I may make an assumption kind of way.
I thought they were two separate charges. The Economy League was going to do it.
Correct, but I wasn't sure whether the ready was going, the whole, the one piece from that one, both pieces from that one contractor, I suppose, were worth, and two separate bills, you know, the whole piece. So I'm not sure. How's it?
Other comments or questions from the board? Any public comment on finance? And before I do that, the next finance meeting is Wednesday evening at 7:00.
Is it seven? Sorry, I don't know why I have six on my calendar.
I have six.
I thought I had it for earlier.
Andrew was seven. You were all six.
That doesn't mean I'm right.
Okay, I have six as well, so that's all.
I just want to make sure so I'm where I'm supposed to be when, that's all.
RBC Capital was all my presentation was, and I had told them six o'clock.
Yes, it's probably six.
Okay, well, I advertised on the seventh, on the 16th.
What the order of presentation is, the chair, but I did tell RBC six o'clock.
Wait, what's advertised?
Seven o'clock.
Definitely advertised on the website.
I think it is seven.
Yeah, because I had seven o'clock, went on my calendar, so.
I gave you six because of the finance and facilities.
Mr. Basil, it's your committee. What time do you want to have it?
Well, if it's not going to be an issue in terms of advertising, I think if you're earlier, the better. Just give the amount of work that we're going to be going through. We'd get it out there earlier than we should be earlier.
When is it Wednesday?
When is that?
I mean, it won't make the paper. I can change the, if it's only, if it's okay just to be on the website. The paper, it's too late to be in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven.
Well, let's start, let's start at six, and we'll start talking about facilities information.
So you want an update on the website to six?
Yeah.
Mr. Mathes, can you do that for me? Thank you.
We'll make it go through, because there's some information there, we need to go over the top 10 list and some other things from facilities that need to be discussed. So I think it makes sense to start with that, and get into RBC Capital, Mr. Thompson as well.
This, Thomas, this is a state study, sounds quite comprehensive, Marie Farrell. You were touching on the proposal that you have, but you lost this mention.
Yeah, I believe I said it was, I think his proposal was $16,000.
One six, not one six zero, just from the paper.
Sixteen, not sixteen.
Sixteen, not sixteen, okay.
Not 116.
Or not 160.
Sixteen.
How do other school...
Mr. Six, I'm sorry, for the record, just take your, your...
Oh, I'm sorry. All the delay, I forgot. Eighteen, next, one and nine, which should be tried. How do other school districts channel into a study like this? It's not typical to have an outside company that can apply such a bill.
Actually, my impression is a lot of other school districts use these types of services and make these types of decisions. When you take a look at the number of school districts gentlemen's worked with, Easton, MFAK, and, you know, a variety of them around here, it's actually quite common to use a third-party consultant to provide these types of studies and analysis for school districts. When we met with the PA Economy League at our last finance committee meeting, they too are doing enrollment studies all across the state. In fact, they had done, I think, two or three enrollment studies for Dan Boeringer's school district right up until, I think the last one was in the early 90s or something like that, and whatever, and they had been doing one every four or five years. And then the school board at that time decided they weren't going to do that. And, but he found his statistics to be actually, I think, 97% accurate, looking back at what he was projecting.
I just wonder if you think the $16,000 is worth it, maybe you haven't voted on it. It's beyond the scope of what your administration would like?
Well, look, I think there's two issues here. One is, when we presented information that our administrators have put together, there seems to be a pushback from certain elements of the community who don't believe the statistics. So if you don't believe what I think highly qualified people in our districts are putting together and presenting, then the question then begs, where do you get the information you need to make a good decision that the public is going to trust? If you're not going to trust our own administration, then you need to go to a third-party source.
I've never heard of public distrusting what comes from administration.
That's, well, I can tell you in March, in February, April, whenever we brought out these statistics, people said...
I think the source of mistrust has been placed otherwise, but not at the administration.
The administration, the administration is the one that provides the numbers. The administration is the one that does the analysis and gives it to the board. That's what happens.
Just my number one. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentation. Mr. Basil, any secretary's correspondence?
None.
Is there a BCIU report?
Yes, Mr. Park, thank you. I do think we can have the IU's past a month. First, we started handing out an outstanding community partner award. And that first award went to our district attorney, John Adams. The IU approved an agreement with Redding to provide alternative education for disruptive, disruptive youth, where they're rated seven through 12. So that's actually a nice piece of income for the IU. We also approved a, as everybody knows, a bunch of issues. We approved the IU, apparently the anticipation note for $5 million with DISC. So if that is intact, that will be available to the IU. As you all know, a lot of the funding comes from the state federal for them. They had a presentation on piloting a tele-practice speech therapy course. So they provided online speech therapy to kids that basically were unable to, whether it be scheduling or the conflict, to actually get to the schools in person, to actually do that. So they followed the program via webcam and online. They set up very well. And also, just a note for those who are interested, the Keeping Kids Safe Symposium, which is now annual event, it's coming up October 8th, and that will be on the grand plaza. And finally, now this might not be as important as it was, but I do have a YouTube link that I can send out to the board if anyone's interested. But there was a video done about the PSSA cut scores. And that's kind of been, kind of pulled off the table. But the video was kind of explaining exactly what happened. The five scores came out as they were, and really trying to walk back the issue as really being an issue. So it was kind of an explanation. So, by the way, once that was a video played out, so I can certainly pass on. That was all.
Thank you, Mr. Rathke. Any questions, Mr. Rathke? Any questions for Mr. Reddick? Seeing none, is there a BCTC report?
Thank you, Mr. Martino. The BCTC met on August twenty-sixth, and the focus at that time was really the start of school and also the school approval assessment for twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, so the number, you know, the percentage of students that are competency, you know, these certifications, they enroll by district, those kinds of things, so they actually do a, as a power presentation, I can scan and then send out to the board for you. That was really the focus of the, that evening, and then we begin at the end of the month. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. Any questions for Mr. Basil? Seeing none, we move on to the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't get my mic. Are they having any luck replacing Mrs. Pringle, or is it the other principal?
They have hired two new principals, or they, because obviously.
Doctor Craft.
Doctor Craft went to, is now the director, so they do have two new principals, and I apologize for naming them, but they do have four staff.
Thank you. Moving on to the legislative report, Mr. Kurtz asked about State Representative Gillen, and I'd like to comment on him coming here on the fourth of September. I invited him to come, and what I told him was it was a back-to-school meeting for the teachers, and simply asked him how much time he wanted to speak, didn't tell him anything about what to say or not to say. Representative Gillen, I think, gave a very passionate, inspired speech, praised our teachers, praised all teachers, and Mr. Gillen is a teacher himself, but I thought it was, I thought he did an outstanding job, and the feedback I had about his presentation was also very positive. Moving on from that, our legislative report, this is now day seventy-five without a state budget. The governor and some of the House and Senate leaders have met sporadically over the course of the seventy-five days, they seem to be no closer than when they started. The next step is supposedly a proposal to put a temporary budget in place, which just prolongs the issue. As far as the Senate, the House itself, the Senate has been out a session all summer, and they're supposed to return later this week, and the House will not return until next week, so they don't seem really concerned about getting budget inputs. I'd like to commend this board publicly. There are boards across this Commonwealth that are borrowing money to function. There are school districts that are using the oxymoron of payless paydays, and there is a school district just to the north of us that has actually at least temporarily increased class sizes to thirty-five children per class to reduce their costs. We're doing none of that, and we're functioning normal, and should be able to function normal for, hopefully, throughout the negotiations between the legislature and the governor. Any comments or questions on them?
I just, yeah, I'd like to thank our business office and our administration and our staff, and it's worth recognizing how we are able to carry on thanks to the fiscal stewardship of this and previous boards, so that our students are not impacted by the inability of our elected officials and parents were to come to conclusions, so thank you to everybody who made that possible.
Yeah, I just wanted to actually say that, I believe the deadline would be February, so if we don't see any movement between now and year-end, we need to be looking at alternative tax anticipation revenue notes and things of that nature to be prepared for, you know, a longer row to hope. But, you know, usually they're announcing next year's budget in March, so I would hope that they come to some sort of conclusion by February.
Even Governor Rendell usually had a budget before February, so I'll see. Mr. Wolf?
That was my question. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to add there too, I think over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of discussion on fund balance and what's the appropriate amount of fund balance, and the fact that we have some fund balance is also a positive as to why we are in a situation that way.
Actually, should I look at the different side of that, shows me how, that lack of funding, the state, we have run through February on our local funds, which makes up the bulk of our funding as close as they can.
I agree, there's too much local funds for me. Is there a transportation report? None? Are there any other reports? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't miss you, didn't I, Miss Sweet? It's because I had notes written on my, on my paper, and I copied over that.
Here.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, the student government, we're always getting feedback, and that's only in January, May anyway. So there's a lot happening at the high school, as I'm sure you know, especially with the vandalism, but there are good things happening, never fear. We have a bunch of college admissions reps that are going to be coming in over the years, and we have lots of Chester coming in next week, as well as a bunch of seniors who are starting to be subject to college giving scholarships, so that's always been moving through. Tennis, soccer, football, all of our sports are doing pretty good this year, as far as sports go. We do want to say a special thanks, like Miss White said, to our athletic director and our football team and the administration for thanking the Marjorie, and they felt really special to me, and it was, it was really cool, especially from the Marjorie standpoint to be recognized. The homecoming game is coming up in a little bit, and a fun fact, the class of nineteen sixty-five is going to be there, and it's their fiftyth reunion, so that'll be pretty cool if you guys grow up, if people grow up and see them. The powder puff game, we have our meetings and practices starting this Wednesday, and that's not this week, but next week, come correct. I believe so, I'm in there, so don't come. Twins Valley, we're going to have our first tailgating as a sports program. SATs are coming up, and ACTs, actually just, we have them last Saturday, for two days ago, really. The lunch, as I'm sure, was a big concern. We, it's actually good, positive feedback, the food's about the same as before, the majority of the lunch deliveries are back, so all the kids are thrilled. It's a really good feeling to be able to go in that cafeteria and have a different program with the same feel and the same community feeling also in March. The Media Resource Center is opening September twenty-first, so thank you guys and to the administration, that's, we just got the furniture in, and we'll be setting that up very soon. Feel free to ask me any questions, by the way, and not for each of the, you guys get to talk, you ask questions, but don't ever hesitate to ask me questions, and I can always ask the other kids, I migrate into something bigger that I can't answer. Charms for band, whoever bought a step funding, thank you, it is amazing. I don't think any of you guys ever had to use smart music, but Charms is a new program we're using for the band throughout the district, and it is such a difference, we can do fundraising through it, we can sell boosters, music, apparel through it, we're not doing that yet, but we can, and there's just so many more options. As well as lunch plan, thank you, that department, that is amazing from a student's point of view, all of our calendar events are all there, all of our homework, all of our tests have participated there. The homeroom reps have been voted on, I know you guys were talking about how we need to get government more involved, Mr. Rick Knight got that, and we have two reps per homeroom throughout the high school, and I think it's about a hundred, you said? Yep, about a hundred, so you'll definitely be hearing even more than us. And last but not least, the clubs have started up and moving, so they'll have more people represented, so be excited for that.
Thank you.
I have one question, mentioned the cafeteria, has the food?
It's pretty good, it's about the same, I mean, it's definitely not worse, but as far as high school cafeteria food, it's pretty good.
Definitely not worse, it's never a good description.
I have a question this week. In terms of the student government, are they involving the, how are you, it's the students who are representative interacting with faculty one hundred, what is the, what is your role in that?
Well, basically, what's been happening is, what did you say, once a month? It's a branding program, so I apologize, but about once a month, all the student representatives are going to go down, and then I will go down as the senior representative, and the junior representative will go down as well, and we'll discuss things, they'll go us their input, as the homeroom specifically will tell us everything that's happening, so we're all very well informed, and then the junior representative and I, and the senior representative will bring all the stuff to you guys.
Great, thank you.
No, I mean, it's working out, so, you know, we have some, I think, the topic, I think, we look for, I think, some of the, some of the pathways and the possibility of having courses to be off to go for extended careers and, you know, some things to, I mean, I point towards, but it's all pretty common, it's not.
Actually, I have a question, I'm curious, correct me if I'm wrong, the setup that's going on now, this is more of a bottoms-up sort of feedback to the board, or is information at the board level going to be pushed back down to the students? Because one of my concerns was, you know, in eight years that I've been here, I think students have a greater voice now in the last year than they've ever had before, but we had student after student get up to the microphone and tell us they had no voice. And that just surprised me, because I'm sitting here thinking, well, we've got two student representatives sitting with us every month, we talk about things in a public meeting, they're in recordings, the minutes are being published, our administration is here for every single meeting, and yet the information that gets discussed here on a daily basis obviously wasn't reaching the student population in some fashion. So I'm just curious, in this new format, how is that going to be addressed?
The nice thing with the new format is, last year, keep in mind, most of the complaints weren't really school board related, it was just general frustration, especially the class of twenty sixteen, we've had a lot of changes to our grades, so our class was more frustrated as we're getting towards graduation, just in general. But the nice thing with this new format is, you have two people for a homeroom, homeroom has about twenty-five kids, so you figure two of those twenty-five are very complaining, they're just, just their homeroom, and then they're bringing it to the group of a hundred other kids, who are all going to whittle down their ideas to like maybe three solid ideas that are issues, then they'll bring them to I and, or me, and the junior representative, and we'll figure out what's a high school problem and what's a school board problem. Because most of the kids who feel their voice isn't heard, what they don't realize is it's not really a school board issue, like if they have a conflict with their schedule, they get frustrated and they come to you and say, I've never heard and I don't get to take my classes, but that's not something for you to deal with, that's something for guys to deal with. You kind of see, so it's not really frustration with you guys always, sometimes it's confusion where you go, frustration wise.
So, Mr. Basil, I mean, also, to answer, you have gone back to your question, it's a two-way channel. This group here, Ellen, and one of the junior designated lead, are not directly connected to that student government, it'll liaison between the board and that student government group. So the student government, there's many things that school governments do by, but then they'll share information with this group, and they will bring information back. So I think in the past, where the structure was, yes, you had students who were representatives, how are they going to communicate the information? It really wasn't a mechanism, but now there is a mechanism to be had, it's kind of a preamble, or just like our, as I said, it's a representative democracy you have in the high school, that then liaisons back and forth between this group and you and that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Sweet. Any public comment on any of the presentations?
Mr. Martino, I just want, I just want to say one other thing, not related to the presentation, but actually going back to the finance committee, meeting. One of the things that we had talked about when Ms. Hicks was at the microphone, I mentioned one was a, sort of a suspension of belief that had been put out there in certain elements of the public about the data that the school district had been generating, but, you know, I think a lot of that also has to do with a variety of different things. So we talked about bringing in the PA Economy League to do an enrollment study, we've heard person after person get up to the microphone and say, well, enrollments are declining in our district because board decisions, curriculum decisions, whatever it is, it's all because of what the board is doing. And none of them are folks that specialize in enrollments and demographics, those are just people like you and I that are making certain assumptions. So I think it's incumbent on a school board, as with any board, to get good information when making important decisions, especially ones that have a significant fiscal impact on the school district, as well as a curriculum impact on the school district. In doing that, you want to hire the experts, you want to bring in people that specialize in this and do it every single day. The PA Economy League had a ninety-seven percent statistical accuracy in forecasting five-year enrollments for the school district, and they've done it multiple times in the eighties and seventies, eighties, and into the early nineties, and incredibly, their services weren't called on when we started a massive building campaign in the school district that put about a hundred and forty million dollars of debt on the books and encumbered, encumbered our budget by seven million dollars a year to the year twenty thirty-four. I think had somebody taken the time to bring in an expert and done an enrollment study and understood what our enrollments are going to do going forward, we may not have had the building campaign that we had going on, and we wouldn't be in the financial straits that we're in today. The number-one driver to enrollments are birth rates, that's from the experts, not taxes, not building, not other things, those things all contribute to, but the number-one driver was birth rates. That doesn't come from me, that comes from the members of PA Economy. You know, we're making very large decisions up here as a board that have a significant impact on the community, a significant impact on our students, a significant impact on taxes and businesses, and it's the board's responsibility to do their due diligence and have good information to make good decisions. Too many bad decisions were made in the past without good information. So that's the reason why we're looking at consultants, that's the reason why we're talking to people that specialize in this kind of work, because nobody else in this room specializes in what it is that these people do, and that's why we're talking to them. That's all I had to say.
Mr. Basil, one more thing, I don't want to be talking about this already, because I don't want to push it too much, but would it be possible for them to issue a recommendation to us after they already experts say focused this? Could they give us a recommendation on how they think it's best to move forward in their professional opinion?
That's, if I didn't make that clear, I apologize, that is something that Mr. Thompson was going to do, is basically tell us, this is, this is what you have and how you're using it, this is probably how you best should use it going forward, given the data that he, that he was able to put together, so.
I think that was one of the issues with the facility study, it's in my mind, we got the information, but then.
No, there would be a recommendation in terms of consolidation, how that would work, but at the end of the day, they're going to need a lot of input and feedback from our administrators, because, you know, how you utilize your facilities depends on, you know, are you consolidating grades, you know, in terms of grade alignment, are you doing a five-through-eight model, K-through-eight model, or eight-through-twelve model, like all the different things that we've sort of discussed here loosely at a board level, ultimately, we have to make that decision, okay? Based on the demographics, what's going to work best for us, both for a declining enrollment and future years, an increasing enrollment, sooner or later, enrollment goes back up again, so how do you plan accordingly so that when that happens, you're expanding in an efficient manner too, right? So, and we discovered, we talked about all of that, and obviously, we'll be here Wednesday night, if you want to call in to this and whatever.
I think that's, that's the point. Only one board member has seen the presentation from Thompson, so it's hard to debate the value of what we got the rest of the same. Any public comment on any of the presentations? Seeing none, we move on to personnel, and let me just say that a lot of the personnel issues are, were the subject of one of the executive sessions, because they impacted the opening school, so. Is there a motion on any of the personnel issues?
Are we approving these tonight?
Yes.
Yes. So this is a voting.
You said it was.
I, they all are, I'm just illustrating the point. Solid. I didn't make any.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Dasey, is there a second? What are you making a motion on, which one?
Well, okay.
A and B.
A and B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dasey, second by Mr. Dooty on eleven A and eleven B. Comments or questions?
See, I have a question. Have you seen my name is listed, but full parent volunteer, notes came up a while ago, must I abstain from the vote? that came up a while ago. Must I abstain from the vote?
I can make it A and B excluding 4A, 18 and 19.
We can start them later, so...
Sorry, I'm saying, if you want to those to the other stuff.
Well, why don't you just... I think if you're just abstaining, I think... Yeah, I think I'll say approve, if in order, yeah, I think so.
Are you sure? Because that may heavily influence my vote.
Yeah. Make sure I'm not reading this correctly, you know, Mr. Robinson. Under A2, are, are grouchy for them that has four months of paid leave? That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Make sure I have that correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Ham, answer question? Yeah, I just had a question from Mr. Hurley. We looked at volunteers and things of nature at the last meeting. It was a vote subject to somewhat issues that you were looking to clarify. Is that being addressed here, or is that issue separate from this?
That issue is separate from this.
Saying, are there questions or comments, Mr. Basil?
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rafke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Radalski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Abstain.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, two, zero and one.
Just out of curiosity, would you vote for yourself?
I would. I absolutely have. I trust in my way. That's for the record.
While I change the battery in my microphone, is there any comments or questions on, from the board? I'm sorry, is there any public comment on personnel? Saying none, move on to programs. Is there, is there any discussion on third day enrollment with the student data report?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Hur, for the new format, the enrollments are subtitled by building, and we'll give us a grand total, which will be useful. I appreciate it.
That's only for third day enrollment?
So that's not going to be the way it is?
It's for third day, you know, it's third day enrollment.
You do get a bro, I mean...
You get that.
So that's a special...
Yeah, that's a special form.
But you also get that...
But you get that.
You always, you also get a report that breaks down by building and by grade.
Yes, you always get that.
On a monthly basis too. It's not...
No, they don't break it down by middle school and high school.
Yes. Yeah, it just, it's in going left and right, it's up and down.
Okay.
That one might be easier.
Yeah, that was one. So this is just a special reporting?
Correct, third day enrollment, that's it.
Here's Kurtz, perfecting my microphone. Any other discussion on third day enrollment or student data report? Saying none, is there a motion to approve the 2015-16 letter of agreement between River Rock and Daniel Booth? Sub booth?
Are you going to do C through F?
Oh, I have one more question, I have a link. On the, the school transportation non-DV report. So I've identified seven, about seven institutions that, the schools, the money does not follow the kids. The kids that go to those schools, the money doesn't go anywhere. The rest of the kids, like, the rest of the schools, can you, can you just confirm that? Like Deborah O'Connor, is that a school that, that they, the kids are pulled out and it's a private school, so the parents are paying tuition, or is that a school that our special department?
I can go through each one. There's some providing with that information. I don't have all that at the tip of my fingers, but I can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to programs, is it, is the motion for just 12C or for 12C through F?
I'd be happy to make it for C through F.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Rafke, second by Mr. Daskey. Comments or questions?
I'd like to thank everybody for the voting.
I agree.
Mr. Basil? Motion 12C through F by, first by Mr. Rafke, second by Ms. Radalski, Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rafke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Radalski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes none, zero. Public comment on programs?
Saying none, move on to policy. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Martino. We did have a meeting tonight at 6 o'clock, and we got quite a bit of work done. We received a demonstration by Mr. Mattz on the hosting of the PSBA, PSBA's hosting of our, our policies, how they're going to look when they're posted on there, and the process by which they, they're going to be, as we approve them, they're going to be removed from our, removed from our website, and they're only be exclusively on the PSBA's website. Mr. Small gave us a, a report out on the recording for the booster organizations, their self-reporting of budgets pursuant to our new policy. Again, what we're trying to get at is a little bit of the information of, you know, what these organizations are, are fundraising for, and they're, we're looking at it in their budgets, ultimately to make some decisions on, the board can make some decisions on, the things that they're fundraising for. Should they be really fundraising for that, or they should be supplied by the district? So that's, you know, something that we have to get into the, get into the data and find that, that information. So thank you, Mr. Small, Mr. Miller, for wanting that information together. We're going to be possibly making some improvements or refinements to the policy as we get through this first year, to make it a little easier for the booster organizations to report and have a format that's easier for the business office to, to work for. We also, as you know, we received back all the board level policies, the zero level policies from PSBA. So we had a discussion on, you know, how we're going to review those. I'll get into when we're going to review those shortly, but another one of the important policies was the 2014 school volunteers policy. We, I was able to comb up some wording that I found from other districts of what they had on their websites on how to differentiate between a, somebody comes into our buildings to, you know, just to read to the students, or to, you know, make a public speech or something like that, and that they would be treated differently than somebody who's going to be in the position where they could be one-on-one with a student. And of course, we want those individuals with that opportunity to have a full clearance. So, but we also wanted to not impede the public's participation in our schools, which I think is very important, that they feel welcome and we have a policy that, and how they would be handled. So we did, we did make some changes to that. We have a recommendation that we're going to bring to the board at our next meeting for the first reading. We also discussed, you know, what the reimbursement would be if a volunteer had asked to be compensated if there was a charge for their background, appearances presently. If you have lived in Pennsylvania for 10 years or more, you're only required to get the criminal background check from PA and the PA child abuse background check. If you're less than 10 years, then you have to get the fingerprint of the child. So if you're a volunteer, I think the, if you're a volunteer that you have fallen into that last category of having to get the fingerprint background check, it's about $35 a cost. Presently, the governor has waived the two $10 fees for the PA criminal history and the child abuse. So right now, that, for most people, that costs nothing. But if that would ever change, we agreed on $20, $20 for this, what would be the reimbursement value if the volunteer requests it. So those are, that will be the recommendation that the policy committee will be making later this month.
And pre-approved?
Pre-approved, yes. We also discussed the teleconferencing policy. We had a pretty long discussion on that. We're going to get back to our solicitor for some questions about the purpose of the committee and the whole, should it really be considered a voting meeting, and how that should be handled going forward. You know, we have, just as we have tonight, we committed the whole meeting and it became a voting meeting, but there was some discussion on whether that should be two separate, two separate meetings on the same night. And those would not be considered regular voting meetings. We are going to have another policy meeting next Wednesday, the 23rd, here at 6 o'clock. Mr. Kramer just just writing this down, so we'll just decide that tonight. That will be in addition to the next committee meeting that we have next, next month at the beginning, right before the committee and the whole. Anybody have any questions?
I just had a quick question. Would, is it the committee's sort of thought process in terms of addressing these, the community or the volunteer policy, maybe providing some sort of administrative guideline that all building administrators are working off of one list, perhaps, like a master volunteer list or a master community participant list, just so we address the issue of when does somebody finally migrate from being a participant to being a volunteer?
There's no longer a number of events.
I saw that, yeah.
So they just, we're restricting that level of community participant to full-time observance of a district employee. So whether that be, you know, in a classroom environment, or if it's an auditorium, what have you, they will never have the opportunity to be one-on-one with a student. That would be, if they would have, you know, get above that to the point where they would be in that position, then they would have to get their full volunteer clearance.
Okay.
Can I ask you questions? Any public comment on the policy? Saying none, is there any old business?
Actually, I do have one, for a quick thing. I guess I would fall under business. And I assure you that at this last meeting, I just wanted to publicly give you an update last meeting on the elementary teachers being recalled. And I know Mr. Martino and I don't necessarily agree on things all the time, but I did want to publicly point out, and repeatedly said, you would follow the recommendations from the class sizes, and that's the way you would, so I just wanted to bring it up. For the public to recognize that, people, people there, see, you got to go through the event, right? So I just wanted to publicly say that. You, you know what you said?
I'm prepared to save that for when there's 36 people here in my place.
360. I actually have a comment. Sort of old business. The finance committee had met with the PA Economy League, as I mentioned, early in August, where they had provided some information and a proposal. They also provided us a lot of background information on themselves, as well as the accuracy and history with which they report enrollments. One of the things they had mentioned to us to really get something rolling, that they would need to pull October's enrollments and get started. And truly, they'd actually start collecting data ahead of that point in time, but that would be the go date. Since we're literally four weeks away from that, I guess what I'm wondering is, is this something that the board wants to move forward with, a third-party enrollment study, or is this something that we trust the data that we currently have and want to move forward with the data that we have in terms of forecasting and any other use for that that we deem appropriate?
Mr. Wolf had asked about reverse engineering our enrollment studies, and I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but Mr. Small, could you, not tonight, come up with a report on the past couple of years, what our forecast was versus what our actual enrollment was?
Yes, we have that ready and was for this month's finance committee, but we've got a lot on the agenda, but I'll certainly make it available to the board.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to know how we've done, and if we're that far off, you know, that's, that's one thing. If we're almost dead on, then do we really need an outside source?
Can we make it better project for like, when we have, maybe statistics class or something, math class, that maybe could be our numbers?
I mean, you know, personally, I think, I've looked at the data, I mean, I looked at the data that we've done for the last couple of years versus our actual enrollments, and it seems to be pretty spot on.
No, I agree.
If anything, we're, we're underreporting, you know, what our true enrollment should be, in the sense that we've, we've had inflated numbers as opposed to, you know, under, underreported numbers. But having said that, I just want to, you know, we need to make a decision, I think. Are we going to move forward with it, or we aren't? And if we aren't, then we got to be fully committed to, to the, the work that our administration has done and be prepared to defend that going forward. If people have some questions in their mind, then you need to voice it now, and, you know, that means we're going to have to spend some money with an outside consultant and to justify the numbers that we're using. And we'll need to make a decision. I'm going to ask the board to make a decision, yes or no, at the voting meeting on that, just so that if it's a yes, we get that going for October. If it's a no, then we just move forward with what we got. So Mr. Small, I guess if you could bring some information along with you to the finance committee meeting, I don't, I think it warrants at least a 10-minute discussion, if nothing else.
Mr. Small, I may have, so what year did you go back? How far back did the, did you guys go?
I don't recall.
So I'm hoping it, I'd like to see if that model would have predicted part increase that we had of those, we had like 2000s or something.
I just wondered, will the, will they do the one, will he do the one study based on, if we don't go, I mean, will he take...
You're talking about Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't know you were, or if it went in.
The only other issue I wanted to bring up, not related to that, but old business. We had talked about at a board level incorporating online courses as part of our curriculum for the high school level as a way of enhancing the curriculum offering to students with courses that we don't currently offer, like, let's say Mandarin Chinese or something else. And they just seemed to be like a great idea that was out there. We talked about using Berks Online as a way of doing that, but to what degree has that idea been developed or investigated? Actually, we have looked at several different vendors, and we've looked at a whole bunch of different courses. There's some opportunities there. I think we should flesh that out with the new principle, obviously, and we should also work it through the curriculum and instruction committee. But we've talked to probably four or five different vendors that can provide a whole variety of courses to our students, above and beyond what we can currently do right now. So there's been a lot of work on that particular topic. Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. McNee, you were going to look at, basically, the courses we're offering now and what you feel we should be offering as opposed to what we've always offered?
Yeah, we're, we're doing a number of things. So we did the analysis on the number of students who enroll typically, at the teacher's level. You know, all the courses are valuable, I mean, and high interest. However, you give us a choice, you have to make some choices. And there are ways to make those choices, where the goal is that the students get the opportunity to have all of those courses in their four-year experience. In addition, how do we create a model that allows our kids to differentiate and be competitive out in the market? So when we have the marketing, the education market, the, when we have the presentation coming up at the curriculum and instruction, and I can do it, I don't know, whatever you like, but we'll show the same at high school, and we'll answer a number of those questions. The question about the online piece is an option. Another way to envision what that is, you know, what Mr. Crowley said, is we're looking at a lot of partnerships right now with Pratt, Berks Campus, Albright, Monco, but how do we offer this enrollment piece to our students, and for additional courses, Saturday class, some other opportunities, and also don't tread on the courses that our teachers are currently teaching. There's a bunch of things going on. We can't do, do everything at once. It's a big amount of work that we want to take our first steps.
Is the idea then to incorporate some of this starting 15th or 16th, 17th then at the high school level?
When we look in November, I present the pathways piece, watch out for first steps. We've got a five-year process really to roll through and really build it, you know, right? You all may have used tax breaks, isn't one who's let's do it right, not right now. So we'll be taking a number of steps and building it, you know, that's sustainable and long-term and right for students.
And then are we also looking at that same line we talked about last year, sort of reversing the process in terms of the course offering? We typically get that in December, the board approves it, and then in March, we're talking about, well, should we be offering these courses? But by that point in time, students are already looking at it and then we end up in the situation we had last year, whereas, you know, we put the carton behind the horse. What's the plan?
Yeah, the problem is, I mean, it's difficult. Here's what causes it differently. So we're gonna put this pathways piece in November and have that in the first graph for you to make some decisions about that. December tends to be like a reorganization time often, so there's not a lot that happens. So you kind of miss that opportunity there to make a decision. That's why it often comes in January. One of the things that we talked about is trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit so we can make some enrollment in fairness to students and teachers that if we have to make some hard decisions about staffing, that we can inform those students in March and inform students in March. Drafting pieces out into June is unfair to everybody and we all agree with that. So that's the goal. It depends on how interested you are in the concepts that I'm following, it's gonna do in November.
So will the course enrollment book then that we're approving as a school district, is that then, is the idea that that comes out like in April? I mean, I can't imagine it takes somebody six months to decide what classes they want to take, I mean...
No, it doesn't, it comes out before April.
Yeah, I know.
The council starts delivering the statistics January, they begin by end of January engaging students in the course catalog and the draft courses they would be interested in.
Can that process be pushed back? Because it seems as if they're doing it over, you know what I mean, like?
The challenge of pushing it back is we don't know if the kids are gonna pass certain courses that are pre-graduated to be getting to other courses. So that creates a difficulty. It can be done, but there'll be a lot of correction and adjustment as you want through chiropractic points, you can handle it. So you can definitely deal with it. I mean, you really need to be pushing it on in October then if you really want to meet that kind of timeline.
Well, I guess what I was wondering is if the course enrollment book, I mean, I just don't understand the process, I apologize if I don't, but if I'm a student and I'm getting the course enrollment book in, let's say, April 1st, right? Then I've got two months or whatever to select the classes I want to select, meet with the counselors, talk about the possibilities. At that point in time, I should have a better understanding of what my grades were last fall, maybe where, how I'm doing in the spring, and that might make it easier to make selections going forward or?
It's much sort of that. They're having, what you're describing in January, end of the semester, they're having those conversations with the counselors, maybe course selections, getting their interest and kind of looking at courses they want to take and or like.
Right, I understand that's what we're doing now. I guess the question I'm asking is, should those decisions be being pushed off until later when there's more information available, like the board's making better decisions, you guys, you know, are being able to present the information? We're not crunched for time and trying to back everything up into September and October. We have an opportunity to develop this stuff and talk about, well, look, we're gonna, you know, these are the courses we want to offer, this is how we're gonna do it. It gets to the board, the board has an opportunity to deliberate. I mean, a lot of times I've sat here and it's like, okay, here's your course offering sheet on a Friday, go through 300 of these things and vote on it on Monday. And as a board member, there's no way you can have any kind of constructive feedback on a process like that.
Mr. McNee, simply stated, is there a reason it's done in January?
Beyond it's traditionally been done to get it in some students.
Besides traditionally, we've always done it that way?
It's difficult to build a high school schedule in short order as we have typical time issues getting shorter. So the more time you have to get the courses, to get the selections, kind of get a real set, the longer you have to look at the opportunity to build out the master schedule so it flows and you don't have these calls that many can get where there are confidence points.
For the next curriculum meeting, would you look at how much time is actually created as opposed to we've always done in January?
Yes.
Because you're real experienced now, right? So this should... Yeah. Moving on to item 15. There's four motions here. Is there a motion for any or all of the items? Make a motion for 15A through D. Second. Motion by Mr. Doty, second by Mr. Wolf for 15A through D. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a comment slash question for item 15B, vote in group, pulling please letter of agreement. If you turn, if you look at the letter, it's the agreement, it's not built in, it's just a template. And there's items that need to be completed that haven't been. So I don't know, I don't have access to it now or I can pass it around and look at it. But I think the whole board has it. You have to be in front of it, okay? I don't think it's a state to be in. I'll pass it around. Yeah, schools are charging a fee. All of that stuff needs to be...
They already have a facilities use filled out and I will attach it to that.
Thank you. When you presented the document to the board that we voted on, it's like, is what?
Does it happen to be on today?
I'm sad, I didn't know that. I don't know that. We knew we wrote on everything tonight.
Yeah, why are we?
Yeah, why are we?
Normally this is discussion and then we vote on these things at the voting meeting.
Okay, then it shouldn't have been listed as a motion, I know it should have been a discussion.
I was told to list it as a motion.
Maybe it always looks like that because we just, anyway. I understand that we needed to approve the personnel stuff, but I just thought everything else was discussion for the...
Well, item 15C, I thought we were approving, but I have a question about 15C.
And 15A was also an approval thing. And then I asked you about D and you said I can put it on.
Well, 15C, I was looking at it tonight and it's the administrator's competition plan that I thought as a board, none of this were in agreement with this performance evaluation. We've been questioning prospective superintendent candidates about how they could change it and yet this plan runs for three years. So do we really want that included in the agreement?
Can I move to table 15A for D?
A through D?
Yeah.
Well, you want to take A, what's A, is A need to be?
Does A need to be? A needs to be done, yeah. We can do it.
A is an after-school program for the kids.
That's A is done right now, sorry?
Yes, yes it is.
When I amend my motion to table item 15B through D, Mr. Doty, you have sent that in there, okay?
So you're only voting A?
We're only, the motion on the table right now is to table items 15B through D and which would allow us to vote on A, that motion is successful.
So B is being tabled too?
Yes.
Comments or questions?
Will it be sent, I guess I?
Yeah, what I have here is first by Mr. Doty, second from Mr. Wolf through 15A through D with a motion to table B through D by Mr. Kurtz, or A through D by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Doty with an amendment accepted by Mr. Doty and proposed by Mr. Kurtz for B through D to be tabled.
My other comment was, can we all attend the Berks Club's event breath?
No.
He's done some of that extracurricular.
Mr. Kurtz provided the board with minutes for the screening.
Well, it's kind of, that's a copy of one, probably extracurricular, everyone seems to be issuing that.
I have a question about it. I'm just having trouble with clarity of the copy. It's $90 or $80 for what's being offered to our families and they can sign up for this, after-school club schedule for Science Explorers. There's a club rate, 80 or 90, I can't read.
Is it 80?
Is it, I can't read. 80, it is 80. It's awful blurry. So what's like, what's going on with this? What's neat?
There it is.
In regard to the after-school club schedule by the Science Explorers, I'm just, it's not totally clear, I'm not really sure what this after-school program is. Is it billable to our parents at $80?
Yes, Mr. Wolf, could you add some color to this, I just weren't aware of course?
Yes, I have a microphone, I'm sure you can hear me with my physical. Yes, it is billed to our parents and there is no charge.
And something we're conducting at AEC or at Birdsboro from 3:30 to 4:30?
Correct. And we've done it.
On Thursday.
Several years, I don't know how many years total. And we've done it for several years very successfully, well- participated in the club.
It runs from August to March and about how many more students participate in that?
I was probably in the 18 to 20 range in the balance of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing other comments or questions, Mr. Baker?
To clarify, is there no motion to table items B, C, and D, natural through item A, but vote con next?
We have to look for the table.
Yes, vote for the table, correct.
I think that's just to draw everything, we can just vote on one thing.
Mr. Doty, this is a vote to table items 15B through D. Mr. Doty?
Got it, yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathgen?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Nalske?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Baker, yes, Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes 90. Is there any public comment on your business?
They were talking about place room size. What is the policy for high school place sizes? I found on...
I don't believe there is one.
Okay, because I was looking on our...
There is, I was, there is no specific class. I think the only thing that we had is a class size is under 10, would have to get approved a bunch more.
Okay, so you can have 30, 35, at least.
I guess it depends on the class.
Put them all in a study hall.
Okay. My daughter has 30 in her math and 31 in her social studies. So I went and looked on the website and there is, I found the elementary and middle school, but nothing for high school. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, is there a motion to return?
We agreed to a public presentation, but issue is limited for this.
Okay, I'll withdraw my question.
Shane Carville, hey, what do you got to cover? I have a question with when you're scheduling your elementary and middle school classes, there seems to be a mixture of, you know, from your high-end kids to your struggling kids in classes. Until you get to math and language arts, then they group up by their ability. And I was wondering, why is it just math and language arts? Why isn't science, social studies, art, music? It seems, you know, if that's the best way to learn math and that's the best way to learn language arts, then why are we separating the kids on their ability in the other classes?
Mr. Hurley, I wonder if his administrator's gonna have to answer that, I can't.
First, there's difficulty in math, there's prerequisite skills that the students need to have in the math classes. We try to differentiate our instruction the best that we can, it sometimes is more difficult in other subjects, in subjects like math as compared to science and some other areas. Mrs. Key, so if you want to add some pieces to that filtering?
So I'm glad the language arts, and you deliver differentiated instruction within the classroom so that the teacher can, in small groups, with different instructional levels, but math is really the only subject that we've ever recorded this whole curriculum in. Any pros and cons to both ways of doing things?
Well, I've been asking this question for probably four years and, but I still can't understand why you have gifted students, you have kids who are at the top of their class and then you have kids that struggle and you throw them in the same classes except for math and I guess in middle school is language arts also.
The problem on science?
And then when they go into science and they go into art and music, the teacher has to find a medium. So they have to break down a class education for the top higher students and make the lower-end kids struggle and...
Let me ask you, I don't disagree with the concept you're saying, but I'd have to ask the administration, I mean, that's really not a board issue, it's curriculum. Is there, would there be a problem dealing with Mr. Carville suggesting and/or does the administration think that it's best to do it the way it is?
I think what we'd like to do is we'd like to sit down with you and if we can go through specifics with you with different courses and why we do it, I think it's beyond the scope of this particular conversation, not necessarily a board issue. So would you be willing to call us and sit down? We'd be happy to talk to you about that particular issue. Great questions.
That would be, that would be great.
Great questions.
I brought it up, like I said, for the last four years. And my daughter was, you know, the first few days in science class came home and said, this science class isn't for me, I think I'm in the wrong science class. And I answered her questions and she told me her reasons, I won't bring them up out here, but it's not gonna be challenging enough for her.
I have to this discussion and Mr. Hurley can report back at least to the Curriculum Committee or back to the full board?
Okay.
I think a lot of my special law required, I don't mean script, it's a term. I continue our conversation, I'm interested, are you more about this?
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment on any issue?
Sherry Rogers, Claire Gojoy of Douglasville. You can ask me questions about the cafeteria. I serve, I'm a teacher at the elementary center. I have lunch duty and turkey, hot turkey was always one of my favorites. Not that I've been eating lunch there all day, but the other day, Friday, Thursday, I don't remember when it was, the cafeteria served lunch meat turkey with gravy on it. So they had a small circle like this, it was maybe a little thicker than the normal thin-cut at Redners. No knife, so children are holding their slice of turkey on a fork, trying to eat it around it. So I don't know who made the decision to take away a plastic knife. First of all, I wanted you to know that it was lunch meat turkey that they served. I was really, really disappointed in the presentation of the lunch. And I don't know who took away plastic knives, but I really think, and I will go out, I should have talked to my principal, but children, either the food needs to be cut up or I'm always hounding them about their manners and it was really not a good situation. And it always happened before with ham as well, but I didn't have lunch duty last year, I do have it this year, so I think you need to know.
Are you saying there are always more plastic knives in the cafeteria?
I don't know what the situation is, but the... I don't know what the situation is, but the...
No, what was there last year?
Not last year, there's, it's been, it's been several years since we had any instrument that they can cut their food, so when they have a little slice of ham, and now we have these slices of lunch meat turkey, and it's really not a good, it's not a good presentation for children to be eating like that.
Mr. Small, would you, would you discuss that with the, the Christians group?
Okay, I don't know who, right, and I was disappointed in the, in the lunch as well, honestly, because that was always real turkey with gravy on it, so, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Raskin, is there a motion here?